Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the Whitehall City Council Meeting of May 4th, 2021. If we could please rise for Lord of Silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Al, will you please call roll?
Yes. President.
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey. Rodriguez. Elmore.
Present.
Coniston.
Present.
Cantor.
Present.
President of Congress.
Present. I would now accept a motion to excuse the absent members.
I'm going to exempt the absent members of the council today.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Cantor, Mr. Cantor, excuse me, to excuse the absent members. Ms. Al, please call roll.
Pat.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The absent members have been excused. The approval of the April 20, 2021 Agenda and regular meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to approve the minutes from April 20.
Second.
Been a motion by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Cantor, for the approval of the April 20, 2021 Agenda and regular meeting minutes. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Pat.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved. This brings us to our first poll public this evening, and we do have one comment that was sent in to be shared, and Ms. Al, if you could please read that.
Gerald Dixon, 3877 Dona Street, Whitehall, Ohio. To all gathered, I simply wanted to give public thanks to whoever is responsible for the trash can at the corner of Robinwood and Dona. I have noticed the boys on the corner using it, and on Monday I saw it was full. So again, thanks for that measure for the community.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Dixon, for sharing that with us. We'll now move into our standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management. Mr. Morrison, if you...
Yes, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met last week. We have several items up for consideration this evening, and our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Great. Thank you. Community and Elder Apacacy. Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Apacacy met on Tuesday. We have no drives for community legislation, and we'll meet again on next Tuesday at 6:30.
Very good. Thank you. Community Standards Enforcement. Chairperson Rodriguez is not with us this evening. Mr. Cantor, would you please have time?
I agree that Community Standards Enforcement met last weekend. Our minutes are on file. We have several things on the Agenda tonight, ordinance of 2021, 22, 23, 38, and Resolution 12. We'll meet again next week in the back after 6:00.
Thank you. Economic Development. Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance Services. Chairperson Pat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance Services met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have one piece of legislation in third reading, ordinance 23, 2021. We will meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Public Safety. Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again on Tuesday around 6:40.
All right. And Parks and Recreation. Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last week. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again in the back next week after 6:30.
4:00.
And...
4:00.
Well, yeah, 4:00. And we opened our new park this past weekend, North Crossing. Beautiful, just totally beautiful. Saw a lot of people out there. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you. Official reports. Mayor Magler.
Hello. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening and looking forward to our public hearings that will be coming up very soon. I would just like to also let everyone know that there will be a ribbon cutting for the dock park on the corner of Washburn and Beechwood. Had to think about it in my mind for a minute. And that's at 6:30 this Wednesday coming up, uh, next Wednesday, I'm sorry. Also, want to remind everybody about on the 15th of May, at Whitehall Community Park, we'll be having a ribbon cutting in the morning for the new launch. And also at 11:30, we'll have a dedication of a park bench to commemorate fine work that Rockwell employees did for our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. See you, Trudy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, before I get into the official report from the City Attorney's Office, I just started, I was thinking about coming to this program all day, and before I say anything, I just want to just give my expression of just sincere gratitude, just gratitude as it relates to just being able to serve the city of Whitehall, gratitude to be in your presence, gratitude from what I saw this Saturday with respect to the opening of Kelly Green. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Woodruff, for what you did there. Just sincere gratitude. If anything that the pandemic has taught me over this past year, and now that I'm fully vaccinated, I feel at least comfortable enough that I'm not, that I'm safe and I'm safely in your presence today, and I would also like to report that my staff has elected to, to all be vaccinated, so soon they will. We're not 100% yet, but just extremely grateful. We've had, I've lost family members this past year. We've had staff members that have had COVID. I was extremely grateful to see Chris Rodriguez on Saturday. It's just, my heart is just full with excitement just to be back in your presence, and so I just wanted to begin there by saying that as an expression of gratitude as well, I'd like to thank the mayor for generously, in her vision to provide education, very immediate opportunity to do the Moynihan Beach Academy tomorrow. I'm really looking forward to that. And then secondarily, I would like to thank Franklin County, especially the Office of Justice and Policy Program, for featuring our mayor's court diversion program in reentry week last week. I was told today that it is the second most viewed segment, the Whitehall segment, of all of the programs that occurred the whole week. In fact, it's been shared, the second most shares as well, only second to entrepreneurial opportunities. So people were really interested in the innovative programs that are coming out of Whitehall, and I guarantee that this program has the, it has the juice to go national. So I'm really excited about that. Now getting to the official report from the City Attorney's Office, in the month of April, we prosecuted 298 cases in, in the month of April. Unfortunately, that is a 50% increase from March to April. The 50% increase is attributed predominantly to non-resident criminal and traffic cases, but out of the 298 cases, only 43 of those cases of a criminal nature were committed by Whitehall residents. So that's about 14%. So that being said, to date, the City Attorney's Office has prosecuted 754 cases, so we're, we're above trend from last year. Every, everyone has seen throughout the news that, that it's trending that way in every community, so it's not just exclusive to Whitehall. But we're committed to do the right thing. We're committed to justice. We're committed to social justice, and we're committed to doing, doing the right thing on behalf of the citizens of Whitehall. So with that being said, Mr. President, members of council, that concludes the City Attorney's Report.
Mr. Vivins, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to see you back in chambers. City Auditor Miller, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am.
Do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I have no official report tonight. Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Woodruff.
I have no official report.
Thank you. Director of Public Safety, Mr. Van Gregor, are you with us this evening? Treasurer, Mr. Quinzel, are you with us this evening? The following official reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting. The Treasurer's Investment Report for March 2021, the Treasurer's Activity by Fund Report for March 2021, the Treasurer's Fund Reconciliation Report for March 2021. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have two items listed. First one being a notice in the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a transfer of ownership of the D5, D6 liquor permit for TriP Global Chance LLC, DBA, Players 4380 East Main Street Patio, Whitehall, Ohio 43213, to the Eight Ball Players LLC 4380 East Main Street and Patio, Whitehall, Ohio 43213. And the second item is the Agenda for the May 6, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. As been mentioned, we do have three public hearings this evening. The first one is ordinance 2021, amending the zoning map, the cast to Chapter 1121 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, changed the zoning on property located at 4218 to 4238 Rick and Backer Avenue, parcel number 090008215, from A1 Apartment District and Limited Commercial District LCD to A2 Apartment District, property owned by Yerling Green LLC. So the public hearing is now officially open. At this time, I would ask, are there any proponents who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? And if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Mike Shannon. I have 166 up in the road on behalf of the applicant. President, I am a member of the council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to talk to you about an exciting new market rate housing project in the city of Whitehall. I'm sure everybody on this panel is intimately familiar with Yerling Green. What is there now? About 140 units was built in 1963. That's about 10 years before I was born, but I understand that they were remarkable units back in 1963. And before you, this evening, is a proposal to, we have 20 newly constructed four-bedroom units. The ones on Yerling Road, which would be brownstones, and we can get what it does in a minute. I think it's a very significant development for the city of Whitehall for a number of reasons. Number one, it's fairly unprecedented, this type of development in the Yerling River corridor. This development is approximately $3 million that the applicant is making in what I consider to be the urban core of Whitehall, what the streets, the houses, all of our government agencies, our fire department, our police department, our city hall. It's just thrilling to see this type of investment in the Yerling River corridor. This type of product with the zero setback up on Yerling was envisioned as far back as 2000, 2001, 2002, when those iterations of the plans were going forward. And it will provide a market rate housing for a segment that currently cannot find that type of housing in Whitehall. The new investment stands alone on its merits, but it also has a very positive effect on the existing buildings. The existing buildings, obviously being 60 years old, are tired. They've been, they've been utilized over the years. But my client, who is here this evening, Mr. Nassar is here, as well as the property management staff, all of his property management staff happen to live in Whitehall, by the way, they can talk to you about some significant improvements they've made recently in those existing units, redone parking lots, new roofs, things of that nature. But the market rate rents that we would be able to give from these 20 new units will generate a lot of revenue that could be put back into future capital improvements for the existing housing stock. My client is in for the long haul. He's not a flipper. He doesn't buy property and then flip it, and he's been on this site for 15 years. When I look at this type of development, I try to put myself in your shoes, having for a period of time sat on that side of the aisle, and I think you do want to look at the basic city services and how they are impacted. As it relates to water, stormwater, I do have an exhibit that I'd like to enter in the record, which I've already given to the clerk, and I'd like to give each member a copy of it. And it's merely a letter from our civil engineer that confirms that the, the new stormwater that would be generated by this development will be maintained onsite, handled with onsite detention in the parking lots, and then will be released as prescribed by federal and state law. And this ensures that there would be no additional stormwater runoff that would adversely affect the adjoining properties as a result of this development. And then I look at basic city services such as trash, and with the benefit of the unanimous approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we agreed to some additions, and one of them was to increase the number of dumpsters that were available onsite. We've also made sure that those dumpsters, in addition to the heavy gates that are used to open them up when you, the trash is picked up, which I understand happens twice a week currently. There's also going to be side door accesses to these dumpsters, which will allow Harry homeowner, or Harry runner, or Suzie runner, to just simply pick their trash and put it in the side gate without opening up the big, the big double gates that the trash collectors would utilize. Also, based on concerns from neighbors that are present at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, my client was agreed to do a fence along the entire building perimeter of the subject site between his property and the single-family residences on that street. The fence will be of high quality. It will not be a metal shamen fence. In fact, it's not going to be a wooden board-on-board fence. It will require a lot of maintenance. It'll be of newer material, and we've got withstand weathering, the love, color, and master development. We haven't decided whether it's going to be wider page. It would be very nice and apparent. So you've got water, you've got trash. You've also, I remember the neighbors and the behavior of fencing. You also have to look at the effect of this development potentially on the police department. And I have personal knowledge of the history of Yerling Green. As everybody here knows, you know, for 16 years, I was on this council for eight and I was City Attorney for eight. So I was able to see Mr. Nassar come into the city, and before I accepted this case, I spent some time going over the Yerling Green, double-checked some public records, and I was really impressed with the level of improvement of code enforcement at this site. You check with the TJ Smolosik, and he'll tell you that this best practices management system that Mr. Nassar has put into his property management team is one of the best we had in Whitehall. In fact, the crime rate, based on statistics provided by the administration in this particular site, has gone down 32.28% since 2017. They keep a meticulous log of police runs. They use special duty police officers, and those runs are kind of buried in the numbers. If you look at the sheer volume of calls over a full year period, it might be a staggering number of about 400. If you do a deeper dive into the numbers, you'll find out that 75% of those are response to service that are four to six minutes. Noise complaining, somebody voidering, and even traffic stops when they're pulled over into the parking lot, or when they're exiting the parking lot and they don't have a valid driver's badge. All of those are masked into those, those figures. But it's amazing that the drop in crime there parallels the drop in crime that the city of Whitehall has seen across the board for that same period of time since 2017, as I heard Chief Crispin mention recently. The other exciting thing here is that I'm going all around central Ohio to different areas, talking about the critical need for market rate housing, attainable housing. And believe it or not, I honestly believe that projects of this magnitude should be given the same deference as the Norton Fields, as the project soon to become a reality on the northeast corner of Glad and Hamilton, just like the Wyota project on, on Robinwood. This project is going to provide housing for the nuclear family, if you will. You're seeing more and more, particularly with the pandemic, where, you know, parents are going back to live with their children, and children are going back to live with their parents, all of they love, and there's just not the product available unless you want to buy, buy a residence. To the extent we can open up that market in Whitehall, it increases the market rate for apartments in Whitehall, which is very positive. And more importantly, I think, on public safety, it has an effect on the existing apartments. It's hard to throw money at apartments that was built in 1963, and someone said, "Well, stick on a dig." But when you put a $3 million investment right next to those 1963 units, you as a property owner are taking the risk, and that risk will only be beneficial to you if you've got $3 million development, has enough cash flow off of it that allows you to enhance the older units so that the market rates will continue to make progress. And I believe that is the scenario we have here. You know, if you think about, everybody in this council can name certain landlords in Whitehall. Certain landlords are in the single-family market that have little clusters of multifamily, and I would simply say that is what it is. When you look at this landlord, there should be an acknowledgement that nobody else that I can think of that's a landlord of this scale has been willing to put a $3 million investment right in the center, in the heart of our town on Yerling Road. And for those reasons, I respectfully request your approval this evening. To the extent you have questions I can't answer, Mr. Nassar can speak, and if it's okay with the president, I want to see if I missed anything that Mr. Nassar may want to add before we conclude.
That's all right. And I, if I could, just also quickly for the folks watching at home, streaming this on Facebook, you do have, by the way, it's not how it works, but Director Woodruff said if you've got questions, those can be put into Facebook, and they will be read into the record. Not questions, but if you're proponent or opponent, that that can be part of the public record as well.
And Isaac, I don't know if you have anything you want to add. If you have any questions, it's up to you.
I think you spoke beautifully and eloquently and covered all, all the bases that I could think of.
Okay, well, I mean, four out of five of them to agree. So the last thing I would point out is I didn't spend a whole lot of time, if I could go back to the site plan, just to be, you know, legal, the rezoning obviously takes the existing apartments from AR1 to AR2, which has no effect on that. And then the apartment portion, you know, vast majority of that is GCD, and that would be rezoned for the multi-family. That's why I will be before you this evening. And for the reasons previously stated, I respectfully request your support, and be more than happy to address specific questions.
Can you explain the difference between the A1 and the A2?
Basically, it just has to do with the number of units. I think that I could do a deeper dive if I pulled up the code, but when you have, and Zach, you correct me if I'm wrong, but when you have a, the density that we're having on this acreage, the A2 is kind of all inclusive of the A1, and it was the best category to go into with the Yerling River finance based on setbacks. And wanting to do the zero setback on Yerling Road, that was permissible under the A2. Nothing will change in the A1, in the existing development. It is, the A1 is a permitted use and the A2, so the A2 is kind of like an umbrella that covers the building.
Mr. Shannon, can I ask a question? Maybe Mr. Nassar can chime in on this. Like you said, I went through, and I went back even further than four years for our police runs. And I have seen, I actually went back 10, and I've seen where it's came down each year. You have private security there as well, isn't that correct?
Well, you could choose, I mean, we...
We do have special duty.
Special duty?
Yeah, the city of Whitehall Police Office does have special duty.
Are you going to keep this, like during school hours, when the kids are coming home, coming really close to the front, 15 through 20, number 15 through 20, all the apartments of the special duty police officers?
Basically, we use the special duty on an absentee basis. Isaac, if you're going to speak, or whoever's...
If you would, please come forward, state your name and your address.
I'll tell you what I want to try and ask. She looks a little bit...
Hi, I'm Katrina Webb, 2009 Sugar Mill. So we do have special duty. They're set for 12 hours a month. We do not give them specific hours. We allow them to choose which hours they want to, to cover, but they, it is four or three hour shifts.
Are you thinking about increasing it more hours with three new buildings, 20 more units?
That's, I think that's a decision we can make based on...
As, as it goes?
Right. I mean, we're certainly a vulnerable to it. It's working.
Okay.
I mean, their presence has made a tremendous difference. And again, thank for that special duty. Those are baked into those runs that you see.
And I've also seen on the runs, when our police come there, they're not there a long time, four minutes, six minutes, eight minutes, so I was really pleased about that as well. So I think you have some questions. Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay here. Stay here.
Yeah, don't get away from her. Thanks, Mom.
Yeah, Mr. Shannon, you mentioned that the existing units, some improvements has been made. When were they made? Last year, year before, and what type of improvements has been made so far?
Yeah, Isaac can be most specific.
If you would, please state your name and your address for the record.
Isaac Masser, 500 Lake, Lake Miami. Your big question?
Yes. Mr. Shannon mentioned that there had been improvements made on these existing units. How far back was the improvement made and what type?
Okay, so we've owned it for, I think, since 2006, about 15 years. Over the years, there have been lots of cosmetic improvements to the interior of the units, ceramic tile, refinishable floors, kitchens, bathrooms, that type of stuff, kind of as needed over the years, as we've tried to strive for higher and higher rents, which we've been, we've been able to, to get in the last four to five years, rents have gone up about 50%, 5-0. And part of that has been just the, the cosmetic improvements to the units themselves. More recently, just in the last two or three years, we replaced all the roofs on the building. We switched from an old gray three-type shingle that was showing all the lines of all the bold and whatnot to a, a green architectural shingle. I thought green worked well, Yerling Green. And just to generalize this to the parking lot and the landscaping, this year we're picking off a lot of gutters and downspouts because, you know, last time it was raining, so lots of corners leaking water and some downspouts that were leaking or missing. Just general, you know, improvements as needed. The biggest ones being the last two or three years, just roofs, but kind of as things need to, need to be improved or repaired, they are.
Okay, and you stated rent has increased 50% over the last few years. What's the average rent for an existing unit now?
She'll give you the nearest dollar. I'll give you the nearest 50 dollars.
So two bedroom townhomes, if they have not been renovated in the kitchen area, they're renting for 800. If they have been renovated, they're renting for 850. The one bedrooms are at 675, unless they have renovated kitchens, and they're at 700.
And the new ones?
1250.
Is it 1250? Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
Oh, so the new four bedroom units? Yeah.
Unless you say a different...
Yeah, you know, we, we just completed 14 four-bedroom units on the north side of town, and Rose is also here, is always handling leasing of those. And not having many comparables to go off of four-bedroom townhomes, we just kind of marked it at 1250 and said, hey, that seems okay, we'll see what happens. And the, the demand has been tremendous, she has waiting lists. So now we're targeting 1350, and if it could be 1400, we'll give it a shot, but, you know, we feel pretty comfortable at the 1350. we feel pretty comfortable at the 1350 now.
You said 13 or 12?
1250 or 1400.
Okay.
1350.
On the fencing, Mr. Shannon hit on that a little bit, are you talking about some kind of six-foot privacy vinyl fence, either white or beige or brown or?
Yes, yeah, it was, right now there is a six-foot chain link fence there.
Correct.
Some of the neighbors have just mentioned that they would like to see a privacy fence. I said, "I think that's doable, you know, we could agree to that."
So you're going to remove the chain link and put up a?
Remove the chain link that's set three feet down in concrete that we would in 2006, but it'll come out and we'll go back into the privacy fence.
Okay, the dumpsters. I see you've added one dumpster in each section on the new plan that Mr. Woodruff provided says, new dumpster enclosure. Does that include both enclosures or just the one that they're indicating on the diagram?
It includes both enclosures. Right now, the enclosures are a combination of, I guess, fencing material, wood box fence with chain link doors. And in order to widen them, we're going to have to rip out the old enclosures and mix them and, you know, kind of rework it.
Right, the one on the west will be a new enclosure as well?
Correct.
Are you going to continue to kick up twice a week as you are right now?
We are, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
We upsized the containers to, originally I think the five or six yard kind of slant front one, and we upsized to the larger ones, which are eight yards, which kind of have a nice door on the side, you don't need to lift the trash all the way up and over, you don't need to open the big plastic cover. So we've switched to the eight yard ones for additional capacity and end up at twice a week, so that will redeem.
Okay, and these are four bedroom, two bath units?
Four bedroom, two bath, yeah, three bedroom and a full bath upstairs. And then on the main floor, there's a bedroom, full bath, and then the living room, kitchen area.
Yeah, I wish you would have provided a layout for that so we could have seen that. I've been through, driven through there several times, and I only see three marked handicap parking spots. On the entrance here, the first two on the left, and the last one all the way around the west to the right. The new units, I see nothing marked for handicap parking, or am I missing something?
I did not request that to come on the site plan. I can't speak to the existing condition, but I would take your word on it. That would be of paramount importance to us as a landlord to be compliant with the number of handicap spaces. So I would make that a condition of approval if I'm about to subdue it. We'll definitely have a code for a number of handicap spaces. That's a good catch. I didn't go with that level of detail in my request, but if that is an existing condition, it needs to be a product of code.
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. Woodruff could assist you with that.
Yeah, whatever you can tell us about that fence, it's not going to be.
Yeah, whatever, it is what it is, and we will comply.
Will any of these have like patios or have a backdoor or anything like that?
So they just have a front entrance on, as shown. The site plan also showed the street side entrance is going to be on the east side. The building 11, 12, 13, units 11, 12, 13, 14, same thing on the east side, and their main area is going to be on the west side.
Will there be a fence between Ben and Dairy Queen, and other kind of is on some parts right now?
Not evaluated Dairy Queen fence yet.
So the only fence right there by Dairy Queen would be like with the?
The front fence.
What?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, by the dumpster there, going out towards Yerlin Road is what I'm talking about, Mr. Woodruff? Yeah, I don't see, oh, you're going to play fence there.
There is a fence there now, is my understanding.
No, not on that side.
Yeah, the only thing that's in that corner is a dumpster from, yes, from Dairy Queen.
Because my concern would be with the, if you're having kids and there's, they would be playing right there, and that's where their drive thru is.
Yeah, there's a drive thru.
I haven't approached my good neighbors at Dairy Queen yet, but.
That was going to be my next question, I was going to ask you if you have approached them yet.
Well, we're amenable to doing that, it's a reasonable request. That wasn't caught previously, and I also thought that designation on the site plan, that's probably the proper one, I thought was the best one. So, it's a reasonable request, particularly with the driveway being there. So I'll spend some more of your client's money and agree with that.
And you're talking about the entire length, right? Because that's a drive thru all the way down.
Yeah, there's already a fence going down that way.
There's one fence, it's going north to south, but not.
North to south, correct, on the back side.
At least out there.
So, if I could just be clear, as I'm taking notes, council's request is a fence right in this area below units 14 and 15, and because there's already an existing fence here on Dairy Queen that they're required to have to separate commercial from residential uses. I just want to make sure that everyone is clear.
It'll also protect the kids running across from apartments into the side door that Dairy Queen could go inside.
I just wanted to make sure that we were talking about all the same area and the expectation.
And they should meet, so they can't go in in between.
Correct.
Or they go up against the back door.
That's easy, yes.
Yeah, very good idea.
Obviously, all of us are worried about safety. I mean, we, some of us have been up here for a little bit longer than others, and we received a lot of phone calls on Yerlin Green in the past. So this is the first time I've actually even hearing that there's any kind of surveillance or anything like that on the apartments. I would like to see a little bit more of that on the apartments, I mean, once these new ones come into being. Is that something that can be done as far as increasing the hours of?
We'd be willing to look at that, but what's important to note is, we get a weekly log every Monday that they have been providing to me that shows every police run that was made from the previous week. And so it's a constant communication back and forth. So, any blip on that radar tells us we're going to need special duty.
So I think part of that is a management question and having to do with how hands-on and proactive we are with just crime and, you know, unruly tenants and stuff like that.
And if I could just add that, anytime we get those reports, the site person as well as myself will review them, and I will have a sit-down meeting with the tenant and let them know that, you know, we're not allowing it. There has been multiple tenants that I've asked to leave, I actually have one right now that I'm in the process of asking to leave. So we are doing our part to make sure that we're addressing anything that comes across our best from the city. And we do have it set up so that every week we get the email of the regular reports so that we can monitor every single activity. And this is something that we've just started in the last two to three years.
And we'll work with the police as if there is a broken window or domestic violence issue, we will ask for a police report, because in order to evict that resident, we need to have some paper trail or some backup, or hey, there's, you know, that domestic violence issue twice in the last three months, then we're evicted you for X, Y, and Z. And we can't just say, "Hey, you know, you're unruly, get out, we need to document it and back it up." So some of those police calls are actually us calling and saying, "Hey, we need a police report to document X, Y, and Z, you know, occurring this broken window and that girlfriend," you know, whatever, whatever it may be.
And also with me being in the city, I've gotten to know a lot of the officers, so if I have questions, I will call them and say, "Hey, can you be more specific as to what happened, what your thoughts are, what your feelings are, so that we know that we're making the right decision when it comes to giving them another chance, or asking them to leave, or what decision we're making on our end?"
You know, you've got to look at it both ways too.
Absolutely.
With the fence going down, I think that'll help.
Yes.
Some of my concern actually is in front of Yerlin Road or on Yerlin Road by the trees, and you have apartments, 15 buildings, 15 through 20, you have kids, high school kids and junior high kids that will be coming down through there. So then we want to protect the residents as well that live there. I'm not saying that the kids are bad, but kids are kids. I have six, kids are kids.
Wow.
So, we want to protect the residents as well in buildings 15 through 20. So that's why I was asking earlier, so, and I know Whitehall goes up and down the streets, I see Whitehall out there quite a bit.
So what we, you know, what we do in addition is, obviously, this property is staffed every day, usually nine to five or 10 to five, you know, sometimes I go running to the bank or run to a doctor or whatever it may be in the morning. And part of the job that we're there on site is obviously to be looking at the window, being outside, seeing what's going on, and we really have not, we used to have issues when the high school kids would let out, either just with trash or fighting or stuff like that. And in general, the last couple of years, it's the site has changed a lot.
They're set back on Rickenbacker a little bit from Rickenbacker to the apartments right north.
So we also own, it's not on this site plan, but south of Rickenbacker, we own 60 counterfeits. On this plan, the two existing buildings are both 42-unit garden apartments. Directly south of Rickenbacker are 15 fourplex units and 60 units, which are pretty close to, pretty close to the road as well, much closer than the two larger buildings are.
They are right on the south side, which would be close like up on Yerlin Road as well.
Yeah, pretty really close.
And I know those apartments, they go all the way back to the chain link fence at the high school, yes.
And, I mean, yeah, the kids.
I've driven through there quite a bit, so, and not just now, but I mean, in the past too, so.
So, I mean, the kids walk through there, they're running and jumping and.
I think the residents that have contacted us, their biggest concern are the trash, which you're, which you're really addressing really good with that six-foot fence, I think that'll really do it, and the security. And that's why I said I went further than Mr. Shannon, I went back 10 years, and I saw how the calls have dropped, the incidents have dropped, and the time spent by our police officers has been minimal. Four minutes, six minutes, eight minutes, so that tells me, and looking by the chat charts that Ms. Heck brought, the incidents, we have it pretty well maintained.
On those calls, I haven't seen any of them, they're high school kids or stuff like that, generally. I mean, if it does.
That's a good point, yeah, that I don't know.
If it becomes an issue, we run into new issues and new problems every day, and it's a matter of, all right, hey, this is going on, let's address this and come up with a solution and add here and tuck there, that's just part of the daily management of maintaining the property. So if it does become an issue, then it's detrimental to us, so it's up to us to address.
I'm happy to hear that you've made some improvements to the existing ones with the roofs and different things. Do you know how long from the time a tenant calls in that they have an issue in their apartment till somebody comes out to get that fixed? Do you have any idea? That's kind of a random question, I guess.
So on emergency, it's always the same day, or very next day if we're asking the partner. As far as minor things, 24 and 40 days.
And sometimes it may be, they'll get out there and order the partner, like for the resident, it's not everybody that's open, it's not. With COVID, the supply chain, especially for like HVAC related parts is a mess at the moment.
Thank you.
Mike Shannon had said how you are looking at getting these and investing $3 million in hopes to be able to generate revenue and make more improvements on the existing buildings. What are some of the improvements that you would like to do on the existing building?
So we did go through and replacing, replacing some bathrooms, just more cosmetic stuff, as we go through and they become vacant. Sometimes it's a medium job, sometimes it's a bigger job, and overall, we do generally kind of be able to increase the rent after that, so we can probably just say, "Hey, it's worth investing into, let's grab this perfectly good kitchen and put in a perfectly good, nice living kitchen," and some will find that's more appealing. It's, a lot of it is driven by just cosmetic improvements. Actually, we are drawing a table, like this year, we'd really love to go ahead and install ceiling fans in all of the bedrooms. Is it a good investment or not? But I think it'd be nice to have ceiling fans in the bedrooms for units that don't have them, so kind of as we go through and just come up with ways to improve the units, the fact that they were built in 1963, I mean, the closets, you can put about 3 acres. They're not tremendous, so we have to kind of work with what we have and anything we can come up with to improve them. Not for asking a question, but.
I just don't know if you are looking at trying to cut them down or combine units or do something to make them.
So our occupancy here has historically been a high 90%. High 90s, 95, 98, 99, and the units are very much in demand, and, you know, the project has been successful for us for as long as we don't do, which is, the reason why we said this, is a really good spot to add these 20 units if we can to supplement what else we have available. And they are, you know, one bedroom and two bedrooms, so as families grow or people want to have grandma, grandpa living there, or whatever it may be, they kind of age out or grow up to a larger unit, so we'd like to be able to have a variety on our floor plans to offer. And it's good to have some one bedrooms and some two bedrooms and some four bedrooms in this case, when running a property. If you only have one floor plan to offer, it's a little difficult.
On your floor plan on the new buildings, I know you said you've got three bedrooms up, one down. Do you have full-size washing, dryer hookups in there? Is it electric, is it gas, and I know people are watching.
So they're all electric, and there are full-size washing dryers.
In your existing units, is there air conditioning?
In the existing buildings, there are air conditionings, either being central air or through wall sleeve AC units.
What's the average time that a tenant stays like with you guys?
Our turnover rate is, right now, we're vacating two to three weeks of an impact. A lot of times, actually, the majority of my tenants that are there have been there at least three to four, five, six years.
And we've had some people who were there for 25 or. We do find the larger floor plans, we've got, the tenants will stay longer because they don't grow out of this. No one makes you remember being married and having kids, one doesn't ever work anymore. Where's the four bedrooms? I don't know where you're going, you can go out in the four bedroom.
I have a question on the report here for, it says, the storm sewers, says within the new site, stormwater will need to be collected and detained in either parking lots or underground chambers. Have we made a decision how this is going to be done, or are we speculating, or what?
Well, you don't do the final engineering, and so you get the approval and it's regulated by the federal EPA and the Ohio EPA, it's called the NVBDS National Politic District Management System, and they will not issue permits until that decision is made. I, based on my civilian experience, I anticipate the use of the underground parking lot.
So possibly the parking lot between the units 1 through 10 and the existing building, or along the north side of the property, or?
And you didn't say civilian, I don't have the exact layout of the way the system is now, but that's conjecture of my judgment.
And they never tie into the existing, with the existing buildings?
That's correct.
Yeah, then the existing, on this specific park, these two, these two existing buildings, the downsides tie into underground fights into the storm's persistent. And within the parking lot, there's patch basins, as well on the grassy area in the two buildings, there's either either two or three kind of large patch basins, which I think everything ties into the same system on the other end.
Sure.
Just something I have a peep about personally, and four bedroom units, I think complaints that I hear most, not necessarily from people with children, but people of my age that children have left home, and they can't find a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom for when their kids come back into town to visit, they've got to stay in a hotel or sleep on the floor or whatever, so the four-bedroom units are a good idea from my perspective for empty dusters and things like that, so I think that's a positive. Because I've had people my age say, "I want to relocate to a condo or apartment, but two bedrooms are often fine." So that's a positive as far as I'm concerned. That's all I have.
If a neighbor has a concern now, like who would they, like fix with the trash, or they feel like the kind of noise being more noisy, who would be? trash, or they feel like the kind of noise being more noisy, who would be the best person to contact?
So I mean, there are multiple neighbors on the northern property line, I spent time with the two neighbors who came for the zoning hearing a week ago, I spent time with the three, a husband, wife, and another neighbor. So yeah, I have three neighbors. And they can go to the office or call the office, we're approachable, isn't it? Like, you couldn't go, oh, there we go. Of course you can. You are our neighbor, whether we are a business, an office building, a commercial property, whatever it may be, you know, we're not like straddling this, certainly walk over nicely, politely, you know, you know, a maniac screaming with a hammer, but it's, and he was like, okay, great, no problem.
We're there to make everybody's life easier. They are welcome to come in, nine to five Monday through Friday, if they want to speak to somebody other than listed and sitting in the office, they're more than welcome to be at my cell phone number, and I am more than happy to help them. I am easily there from three to five Monday through Friday.
You said these will be market rate, because I know you started out with twelve fifty, but now you're trying not raising the price, but they will continue to stay market rate.
So we're kind of setting market, and there are not comparables. When we first made the application, the first, we're filling out the paper for first leasing of the other units that we had built on the north side of the house, we're trying to ask twelve fifty for those and see how that goes. As people are coming in, like, twelve fifty, there's tremendous demand, and thirteen fifty probably works, so that's kind of what we're going with now, is somewhere in the twelve fifty to fourteen hundred range, probably closer to thirteen fifty.
Will there be different prices for the front ones and side ones compared to back ones?
I don't know.
I'm sorry?
Probably, because the front units have a garage space, I don't know if that's worth a fifty dollars a month or a hundred dollars a month, that's a, ask around, we haven't dealt with garages before. That was one of the, in early planning reviews, I was like, hey, you have to build a garage, it's like, hey, okay, sure. So we've never had garages on our sites before, so we'll do some hard research.
It's a definite plus.
Would you say?
It's a definite plus.
Yeah, I'm sure, yes, definitely, I just don't know how someone's willing to pay for it.
If council, in its wisdom, approves this project, I agree with all twenty units to be leased before they're built. When do you anticipate, anticipate starting building on there?
As soon as we get plans and permits and, there's no delay on it.
We're looking at a twelve month construction period. And that's impressive.
Does the fencing go up at the, more at the beginning or towards the end, and what about with the trash damage?
So the trash enclosures, I mean, as we're doing the project, we have construction period, probably not currently the same. So fencing on the front may be kind of the last thing to go in, so machinery doesn't destroy it and damage it. By the time the project is completed, everything will be completed, I don't know what order the things will go in yet. Certain of the parking lots that are being torn up and redone, it doesn't really pay the middle living, the houses around it, there are all the parking lots around there.
Are you going to have security cameras on these buildings?
I haven't thought about that yet. We do currently have security cameras, I just haven't figured out what goes here.
Anything further for the council?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Woodruff here, monitoring Facebook, is there any proponents that would like to make any comments?
As of right now, sir, we don't have any comments at all.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Shannon.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Are there any opponents who would like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? You say you've got no comments?
I have no comments, sir.
Okay. Clerk, have you received any additional proponents or opponents on this ordinance, and any comments on council office?
I do not.
Okay. Well, if there are no further proponents or opponents, I will close this public hearing.
Mr. President? If I could, I know staff prepared a staff report for this project.
Oh, okay.
Attorney General, economic development manager, staff report is that basically this area is middle density or medium density in our economic development blueprint, and this would go along with our plan quite nicely, and so we recommend.
And if I could, just a couple of things to add. Ms. Coniston, you asked about the difference between A1 and A2. In A1, it talks about dwellings not more than four units, in A2, it allowed for up to twelve, and that was important for this six-unit dwelling that was here to make sure that it worked from the zoning standpoint. That's really the most significant difference in that and why it's not, why we're going from A1 to A2. And then the only other thing, a couple of things that I would add, in our economic development blueprint, pulling buildings up to the right of way and creating that street scape is actually something that was approved as part of that development plan. You know, there's a tremendous amount of data that shows when you put buildings closer up to the pedestrian, walkways and sidewalks, and you kind of put eyes on the street, crime and those kind of things decrease. And Larry, just wanted to piggyback on your question about, you know, where it talks about stormwater will be collected in either underground chambers or in, or either in parking lots. Either way, those would function very similar in that the collection would occur below ground level, so you wouldn't see it, this isn't, this certainly does not call for any sort of rain gardens or retention or retention basins, they would all be in underground stores.
Yeah, there's no room for that.
Correct, correct. And so again, and then the last thing I heard that I just wanted to point out, that when we get to this on the agenda, an additional requirement would be that there would be a fence added on the south side of the site, abutting the Dairy Queen. I just wanted to go over those things. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just, just.
So do we have to amend that, Mr. Woodruff?
When you make the motion, you would just add it to, with the addition of the requirement, that requirement.
In conjunction with planning commission recommendation.
Correct.
Just to provide my own personal curiosity, I would, and it's not a necessary requirement, I would just like to see a floor plan of these apartments if you have, when you give one available. Just a request.
Anything further from Dr. Woodruff?
I don't have anything, sir.
Bless you, good. Add to.
All right, not really, sir.
Add us in conjunction with planning commission for six-foot privacy fence from back to property of Dairy Queen to Yearling Road, is that correct? Is that good?
I, I think that would be right.
Okay.
Right, with the condition of an additional fence on the south side of the property abutting Dairy Queen and conditions of the planning. Yes, sir.
Bless you, good?
I'm good.
Okay. So if there are no further proponents or opponents, I will close the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-one at six, sorry, seven fifty-eight. We'll now move to our second public hearing, ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and subsequently amending, changing the zoning on property located on Norton Crossing Flat, parcel number zero nine zero 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 eight four twenty-three, from A2 Apartment District to General Commerce District, GCD, property owned by Continental Real Estate Companies. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-one at seven fifty-nine, and I would ask at this time for any proponents who would like to speak in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-one to please come forward, state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. President. The applicant for this project, who's here this evening and asked for me to step in and answer any questions that city council may have, and so just wanted to go over this project. Again, I don't believe I received any questions or concerns on this project from council. And so the first one is for the rezoning. So this would be a rezoning of this entire site north of the new opportunity way that would be built, and so this is a rezoning, you know, from the A2s where previously twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-five South Hamilton Road were to this GCD to allow for general commerce to be built on this site. What this would call for, and we'll get to the special permit in the next portion of this, the public hearing, is for a single tenant financial institution on the south side of the property, Site A, and then for a multi-tenant building front on Broad Street in Site B. I'm sure you all read the planning commission meeting minutes, where they talked about this building having the same look and feel as the clubhouse and the old bag of nails in the Norton Crossing Development, and they provided a rendering of what the site plan, of what the rendering for the financial institution would be in Site A. For this twenty twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, the special permit for this is only for Site A, it does not go to Site B. If in the future, thank you, gentlemen, if in the future, Site B, although it shows where a drive-through could be possible, if in the future that needs the drive-through, the applicant will be required to come back and get the special permit for that. And so the special permit is only for Site A, only for that address, but the rezoning is for the whole parcel. So this parcel has, will have three addresses, and again, the rezoning is for the whole parcel, the special permit is only for Site A. Questions? Can I answer?
Thank you. Jenna, do you have any comments? I'm sorry, do you have something to say?
No, sir.
Jenna, do you have any comments on, posted on Facebook?
No.
Proponents or opponents, Jenna?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so given that there are no opponents, Ms. Aug, do you have any comments or, about proponents or opponents to ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one filed in council office?
No, sir, no one's here.
Thank you. Well, if there are no further proponents or opponents, I will close this public hearing on ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one at eight oh two. And we'll now move to our third public hearing of the evening, which is ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and subsequently amended allowing a special permit under eleven twenty-three ten C1 to allow a drive-through window and/or drive-through facility on the property located at fifty-one South Hamilton Road, parcel zero nine zero 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 eight four two three, property owned by Continental Real Estate Companies. So I'll now open this public hearing at eight oh three.
Mr. President, I think I've kind of went over this public hearing in the last public hearing. This is just for a special permit for Site A. Planning Commission thoroughly vetted it, went through stacking all of, all the necessary items, stacked, feels comfortable in recommending this, this project being approved.
Is there any comments from council? And yes, you did cover it, but for point of order, we needed to open up there.
Just leave me in their world, sir.
Okay, I'll make a note of that. Thank you. Jenna, have there been any opponents or opponents of this one? Okay, thank you. Ms. Aug, have there been any comments filed in the council office, proponent or opponent on this ordinance?
No, sir.
Okay. If there are no further proponents or opponents, I will close this public hearing on ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-one at eight oh four. At this time, Ms. Aug, would you please call roll as to whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation?
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Thank you. This evening, our third reading, we have ordinance eighteen, twenty twenty-one, making a fund transfer in amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars from the bond retirement account, one oh one, nine fifty, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred, the debt service fund.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance eighteen, twenty twenty-one, and move to its adoption.
Second?
Second.
I'm looking at you. Ordinance eighteen, twenty twenty-one was introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Elmore for a motion to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance eighteen, twenty twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance nineteen, twenty twenty-one, appropriating and making a fund transfer in the amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents from various accounts in the Wim Petty Fund two seven nine to the Debt Service Fund four oh one.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance nineteen, twenty twenty-one, and move for the adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Ordinance nineteen, twenty twenty-one has been introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Elmore, with a move for adoption. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance nineteen, twenty twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, changing zoning of property located at forty-two eighteen to forty-two thirty-eight, Rick and Backer Avenue, parcel number zero nine zero 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 eight two one five, from A1 Apartment District and Limited Commercial District, LCD, to A2 Apartment District, property owned by Yearling Green One LLC.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty, move for the adoption, as conjunction with the planning committee, for six-foot, six-foot privacy fence abutting the Dairy Queen out to Yearling Road.
Second?
Want to get a shot down on that?
I said second, I was just making sure you're done.
I doubt, I thought he was.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty, twenty twenty-one has been introduced for adoption with the subsequent amendment by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Is there any discussion on the motion or subsequent change? Hearing done, Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty, twenty-one has been adopted.
I really liked the layout and the look, too, just to let you know, it's really nice.
Good presentation.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, changed the zoning on property located on Norton Crossing Flat, parcel number zero nine zero 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 eight four twenty-three, from A2 Apartment District to General Commerce District, GCD, property owned by Continental Real Estate Companies.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, and move through the adoption, please.
Second.
Ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one has been introduced by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Ms. Elmore, with the motion for adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and have subsequently amended, allowing special permit under eleven twenty-three ten C1 to allow a drive-through window and/or a drive-through facility on the property located at fifty-one South Hamilton Road, parcel zero nine zero 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 eight four twenty-three, property owned by Continental Real Estate Companies.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance number twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, and move for the adoption, please.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Mr. Morrison for the adoption of ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, making and approving a fund transfer in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-six cents from the Wim Petty Fund two seven nine, attributed to the two seven nine point zero 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 point fifty-eight thousand account.
Two.
Ten minutes, press one.
To the Debt Service Fund four oh one. Is it two?
One.
One.
I would like to introduce ordinance number twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you.
Move to the adoption, sorry.
Thank you.
You're making sure.
You're doing that, I'm doing that, too. So Ms. Heck has introduced ordinance twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one, seconded by Mr. Cantor, and moved for its adoption. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one, amending one thirty-nine point oh one, titled Petty Cash Funds for Lease and Fire.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one, and move for its adoption.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Conneson, seconded by Ms. Heck, with the introduction of ordinance twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one, and the move for its adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. That now brings us to our second readings, and we have got no legislation. See if you have your second reading. And we'll now move into our first reading. Ordinance thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one, authorize the adoption of the May twenty-twenty-one replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce ordinance thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one, move for the suspension of the rules, please.
Second.
Been a motion by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one, and to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move for the adoption, please.
Second.
A motion for adoption of thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in amount of forty thousand dollars from unappropriate monies in the General Fund one oh one to the Life Cycle Replacement Fund three fifteen, making a supplemental appropriation of forty thousand dollars from the Life Cycle Replacement Fund three fifteen to the Computer Life Cycle Replacement Expense Account, three fifteen point zero 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 point fifty thousand, and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison has introduced ordinance thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one, seconded by Ms. Conneson with the request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Conneson. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one, making appropriation of three thousand four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents from the Tax Increment Financing Fund two seven nine to the Air South One Incentive Expense Account in the two seven nine fund and authorizing the distribution of the portion of total service payments attributable to the TIP to the Effective Vocational School District from the Tax Increment Financing Fund two seven nine, and the amount equal to one hundred percent of the proposed property tax payment the Vocational School District would have received of three thousand four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents, and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, with the seconded by Mr. Cantor, has introduced ordinance thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one, with the request to suspend, suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Thank you. Ordinance thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one, had a motion for adoption by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one, making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of fifty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars and sixty-eight cents from the Tax Income and Financing Fund two seven nine to various expense accounts in the two seven nine fund, authorizing the distribution of the portion of the total service payments attributable to each of the T up to the TIP to the Effective Vocational School District through the Tax Increment Financing Fund two seven nine, and the amount equal to one hundred percent of the property tax payment the Vocational School District would have received of fifty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars and sixty-eight cents, and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Mr. Morrison, with the seconded by Ms. Conneson, has introduced ordinance thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one, with the added request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Conneson. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one will be read by title only this evening, authorizing and approving a general fund expense account number one hundred point two hundred point fifty-one thousand, three fifty-one, titled seasonal intern, and making an appropriation in the amount of seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars from unappropriate monies in the general fund one oh one to the one oh one, two hundred point fifty-one thousand, three fifty-one, seasonal intern, and declaring emergency. Once again, that is titled only. Ordinance thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars from unappropriate monies in the general fund one oh one to community affairs expense account one oh one dash two hundred dash fifty-six thousand, one hundred, and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance number thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, and move for the suspension of the rules, please.
Second.
Mr. Cantor has introduced ordinance thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, seconded by Ms. Elmore, and with the request to suspend all rules. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move for the adoption, please.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted.
Thank you.
Ordinance thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-one will be read by title only and will be referred to Planning Commission for their May sixth meeting. Amending the zoning map attached to Chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall and as subsequently amended, allowing special permit under eleven twenty-three point ten, C, one, to allow a drive-through window and/or drive-through facility on the property located at thirty-five, ninety-six dash thirty-six forty-eight East Main Street, parcel zero nine zero 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 five four eight, property owned by Whitehall Retail Ventures Limited. Again, that is read by title only, as is ordinance forty, twenty-twenty-one, will be read by title only, also being referred to Planning Commission for their May sixth meeting. Amending the zoning map attached to Chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and subsequently amended, allowing special permit under eleven twenty-three point ten, C, one, to allow a drive-through window and/or drive-through facility on the property located at eight ninety South Hamilton Road, parcel zero nine zero dash zero 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 five two, property owned by Great Eastern Owner Limited. We are now finding ourselves in ordinance forty-one, twenty-twenty-one, authorizing and amending one sixty-one point three seven A and E one of the table of authorized personnel of the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance number forty-one, twenty-twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ms. Conneson, with the seconded by Mr. Cantor, have introduced ordinance forty-one, twenty-twenty-one, with the request to suspend all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Conneson, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-one, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance forty-two, twenty-twenty-one, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars from unappropriate monies in the general fund one oh one to the H R Office Supplies Expense Account one oh one point four fifty point fifty-two thousand, and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance forty-two, twenty-twenty-one, and ask for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison, who has introduced with the seconded by Ms. Elmore, ordinance forty-two, twenty-twenty-one, with the request to suspend all rules. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-two, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Resolution ten, twenty-twenty-one will be read by title only this evening, approving a resolution of and by the city of Whitehall condemning intimidation and violence, reaffirming equality under the law, and committing to reviving civility between all people. Again, that's being read by title only. Resolution eleven, twenty-twenty-one, resuming to approve the then announced certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce resolution eleven, twenty-twenty-one, and ask for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Resolution eleven, twenty-twenty-one has been introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Heck, with the request to suspend all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Heck. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Resolution eleven, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Our final piece of legislation this evening is Resolution twelve, twenty-twenty-one, a resolution approving an application for a designated outdoor refreshment area and establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area in the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution number twelve, twenty-twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all the rules, please.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Mr. Ms. Heck, to introduce resolution twelve, twenty-twenty-one, and requesting suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like a refresher on this one. What were the dates again and the times?
Oh, for the door hours?